I'd like to call the Urbana City Council meeting the Committee of the Whole to order. If you could find a seat.
Could the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Alec.
Here.
Ms. Shanawick.
Present.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Pat.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Whelan.
Ms. Wyman.
Present.
Mayor Satterthwaite.
Here.
Okay, I think it would be appropriate to say that we have a quorum. There are yellow-orange shades on the back table. If there's an individual who would like to participate in a public input session of the meeting, it would be a good time to fill one of these out and hand it to our clerk so that it can be passed up to me and we can make a place for you in the meeting. Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? No additions? All right. Okay. Not learning. All right, next part of the agenda would be staff reports. Are there any reports from staff at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Roberts. First, I want to call your attention to the press release that was sent out, I think many of you got it, by email earlier today. But Walgreens announced their store that's going to be at Five Points, the northeast corner of Five Points in Urbana. They're going to have a store about 15,000 square feet. There'll be about 40,000 square feet of commercial development there, so there'll be additional retail and commercial lots or commercial spaces with that development. The total development will be around $7 million. And you'll remember that this is a project that we've already worked with the developers on and have granted them money for demolition of the two buildings that were there before, the Yin-Ching Restaurant and then, most recently, the Europe Inn. So it's probably about a five-acre site with the two of those properties. They expect to be breaking ground in April. It's going to be a 24-hour operation with a drive-through pharmacy. And we're just happy to see that some of the work we did several months ago is bearing fruit. And this should be a really quality development called Five Points Commercial Center on the northeast corner of Five Points. Any questions about that?
Yeah, Ms. Pat? Yeah. Mayor Satterthwaite, would you tell folks is the Walgreens at Sunny Crest remaining open?
Yes, it's supposed to remain open, yes. They're not moving it.
Is there anything else on that issue?
Just that we're trying to get that development agreement to the council in two weeks. Worst-case scenario would be March 14th, but we're trying for the 28th of February to meet their construction timetable. So we have a lot of work to do yet to revise the agreement, but we're working on it.
That sounds positive. Okay, anything else on that issue? Okay. Bruce?
No, I have a different issue.
Okay, is there any other staff report information?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I just would remind those viewers, particularly businesses that are watching, that we have entered into an agreement with Ameren IP to study and to do an audit of their system in Champaign-Urbana. That audit is to determine locations or problems with the system that can be improved. One of the things that we would like to hear is if there are particular, specific problems with reliability for your business. If there are, we would like to hear from you so that we can take a look at that and perhaps prioritize some of the improvements that will be made. This is a long process, however, the city is intimately involved, at least in some of the initial go-arounds of prioritizing projects aimed at improving service reliability. So we're particularly interested, anyone viewing, particularly on the business side of things, if there are areas that you feel need to be improved. If so, please contact myself or Trish Crowley at the City of Champaign.
Bruce, are you looking at a particular section of town?
We're looking at all of Champaign-Urbana.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Right, does that end the staff reports at this time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next item would be the approval of the previous minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got approval, motion, and seconded by Councilmen Pat and Wyatt. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. The minutes are approved. This is the part of the meeting that we have on public input. I've received a few slips from individuals who would like to speak at this time, so if you'd like to come up and address the council for about, give about five minutes. And we have Cop Comston, would you like to come up for us? This is concerning the Urbana Human Rights Ordinance.
I'm Cop Comston, I live at 402 West Nevada. And I'm speaking for myself tonight. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, although that's why I'm here. This is the sixth year I've served on the commission. I take the responsibility of being on the Human Relations Commission seriously, and I'm proud to be part of one of the more inclusive ordinances across the state of Illinois and the United States. It was disturbing to me to read in Sunday's News Gazette that our mayor is discussing in a political forum his intention to amend Urbana's human rights ordinance to drop the provision that prohibits landlords from discriminating against a prospective tenant based on a prior arrest or conviction record. I particularly worry about losing protection for those who only have felony arrests. What about the people who are found not guilty? Their ability to find housing may be jeopardized for the rest of their lives. I would hope that such an important amendment to the Human Rights Ordinance would come only after serious research into the causes for the kinds of crime increases we're seeing in Urbana, not because it's easy to target an already vulnerable part of the population. The city's human relations officer and the commission have heard nothing about this. We're the ones charged with upholding the ordinance. We're in touch with statewide and nationwide recommendations about ordinances across the country. I'm concerned about increased crime in Urbana as well, but I've heard no evidence that this change would reduce crime. If it's so easy to consider rewriting our ordinance in response to today's political concern, what could be next? The Patriot Act was drawn up with the good intentions of protecting Americans, but we've since found that important civil rights are being jeopardized. This proposal strikes me as similarly dangerous. We need to take the time to know what we're doing before we revise an ordinance that reflects much of what Urbana stands for. I hope that any proposal like this would not come out of a political campaign to entice potential voters, but rather that it would receive the serious and professional examination that city staff and appointed commissioners are there to perform. Thank you for your time.
Does anybody have a question for Ms. Comston? Thank you very much. Also, a person who would like to speak about the Human Rights Ordinance is Carol Commens. Would you like to speak at this time?
Hammond.
Hammond, oh, Ammons, yes, I'm sorry.
My name is Carol Ammons, I live at 1108 North Bucie Avenue in Urbana. On the eve of what we have began as a conference to deal with felony disenfranchisement, you could certainly understand my dismay at reading the article that was written about this issue. And when I began to think about it, as I continued to think about it, I thought about so many statistics that we have already researched and we've provided across the city for people to really begin to see the impact of racism in the judicial system. And to hear that our mayor would even consider to take away a protected class, the rights of a protected class, really causes much concern for me. And I looked at some of the things that really affect us, and I will not be long, but I have to say this. The Constitution of the United States proclaimed to give certain rights to all people, but it took many years of blood shed, shed it, and tears for those people to actually be able to use those rights. And we see increasingly in this country those rights being taken away overwhelmingly. So as I continue to read the article, I understood why I had to continue to do what we're doing, and I want the voters of Urbana, this is really more so for the voters of Urbana, to take a look at the decisions that we're making at the polls. Because if we decide to elect people who will not represent the entire population, then we can see why the incarceration rates for African-American men are 9.6 times that of white men. I watched on the news this evening, they're talking about trying to do something about underage drinking on the campus. And we all know that that is illegal. And people can be arrested as well as giving felony convictions based on that, depending upon the crimes that they commit during intoxication. But we do not see an overwhelmingly high rate of incarceration or arrest when it comes to students at the University of Illinois. But this ordinance, this change to the ordinance could certainly affect students, because many of them come to Urbana and many of them encounter police activity while they are here. And we understand that that is something that happens on college campuses across the country. I was once a student as well. As the mayor suggests, for us to remove this protected class, I would hope that the citizens of Urbana would think about, more than just themselves, think about poor people. To send a message that poor people are not welcome in Urbana is the most hideous thing I've ever heard. I came to this city because I believe that it was a fair place for me to raise my children. My children enjoy the school system here, I enjoy the work that I do here, and I enjoy allowing other people to have the same access that I have. And to suggest that we should not do that in the city of Urbana is certainly a poor way for city government to go. We also need to consider other people of color that come to the city of Urbana, looking for opportunity, for employment, for work, for housing. If we do such a thing, what have we set in motion? This is what I have to question. What are we trying to set in motion and what is the motive for such a suggestion? We have to look more than just our own backyards. We understand that we live for each other and we have to help each other in the process of living. So if we decide that one group of people, based on their economic status, or based on their race, or based on their criminal background, that they do not deserve a second chance, then we could not have the coroner that we have in Champaign County under that same policy. So I would ask and recommend that this city council and our mayor and the people who are going to vote in this primary, to really make that suggestion at the polls and make sure people understand that we need a mayor that is going to look out for the entire populace and not just one group. Thank you.
Thank you also. There's a question for you? Carol, would you answer that?
I just have one question. You mentioned the Champaign County coroner. Was, you mentioning that because he has a felony conviction?
Yes, ma'am. Our Champaign County, our current Champaign County coroner has a felony in his background. And that does not mean that he could not be a good coroner because he has that felony background. I would echo what the News Gazette wrote about him, is that every person needs a second chance. And we should certainly be the city of second chances and not a city of elimination of those chances. Thank you.
Would there be any more questions? Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other individuals who'd like to speak at this time? Okay, I guess that would close the public input part of this meeting. We'll go on to the business.
Yes. If I could just respond a little bit. Certainly accusations have been made about my positions that are inaccurate. I certainly don't intend for Urbana not to welcome the poor, as Ms. Ammons was suggesting. That's certainly not the case at all. But I have been suggesting that maybe we take a look at our ordinance and make it consistent with what the Housing Authority of Champaign County is, for instance. And they have, I talked to Mr. Bland a couple of weeks ago, and they have a policy where they can deny housing to people that have felony convictions in their background up to, within the last five years. Now, it doesn't automatically mean that they would be rejected, but it allows them to reject that person based on a criminal history. And the Housing Authority across the country has recognized that, in many cases, a criminal background is a predictor of future behavior. And that's why the housing authorities throughout the country have adopted such policies. And that would be a policy that's not inconsistent with the city of Champaign either. In fact, in Urbana, we also, we also have cases where we do not allow people with certain criminal backgrounds to hold certain positions at the city, in law enforcement, in driving taxi cabs, even if they have a felony background, felony history in their background. And so this is certainly not something that's inconsistent with what other governments have done. And I'm not saying that we ought to rush to judgment, but it's something that we should take a look at, because there are many people in our community that believe that this is a problem, because some landlords are not, believe that they, their hands are tied in doing background checks. Now, I don't know if that's an accurate perception or not, but that certainly is a perception. And so I don't want to be, have my position misrepresented, but I do believe that we ought to take a look at it and make our ordinance consistent with what the Housing Authority and possibly the city of Champaign have on their books here locally in Champaign-Urbana.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Pat?
Last Wednesday, I went to Springfield and testified before the Illinois House Judiciary Committee against a piece of legislation that was, whose sole purpose was to override the Urbana City Council and prevent us from enforcing the provision of our human rights ordinance that prohibits discrimination based on prior arrest or conviction record. The Department of Corrections signed in against the bill in agreement with my position, as did the Illinois Municipal League and a number of organizations advocating for the rights of the poor and for housing rights. It was a very interesting discussion, just some highlights of it, because they're relevant to the comments the mayor's just made. One is, the policy of the Housing Authority of Champaign County is not mandated by HUD. It might interest you folks to know that the Department of Housing and Urban Development requires public housing authorities to ban from public housing anyone who has a felony conviction for drug-related activity on the property for up to three years after. And only after the person has had due process rights, which include the opportunity to appeal the decision, and grounds for an appeal to be granted include the person having been, gone through drug rehab. In the discussion by the committee, the Judiciary Committee, Representative Lou Lang, actually a number of representatives said some very good and intelligent things. Representative Lou Lang, I think, raised the most important point, and this is something I hope that Mayor Satterthwaite and anyone else who's thinking about changing our law will consider, and that is, there is a very big difference between the government as a landlord and just any Joe off the street as a landlord. And to say we want the same policy as the Housing Authority and that we've accomplished that by changing our human rights ordinance is highly inaccurate. If the city were to require the same things of private landlords as they do of the public housing authority, we would have a lot better housing policies and housing opportunities for tenants. Imagine people having good cause termination rights, housing quality standards being applied, due process rights. If someone wants to evict you, if the Housing Authority wants to evict you, you get a hearing, you get 30 days, none of this, five days, and then they take you to court, you don't have a lawyer, and you're out, which is what happens in the private market. Representative Rose did withdraw his bill because there was not support for it. And I don't want to mislead you, the House Judiciary Committee's main focus was on the issue of home rule. And in fact, there was one member of the committee who said, "I agree with Representative Rose 99% of the time, but I thought he supports home rule, and I do too." And everyone seemed, not everyone, they didn't all speak, but those who spoke seemed to, with the exception of one member, seemed to feel that it was just not the place of the General Assembly to override the city council. I'll remind all of you that while pandering to prejudice is one thing we can do in response to crime, an increase in crime in the last 18 months is obviously not the result of a law that has been on the books in Urbana for 26 years. And I want to remind you, that law has been on the books for 26 years. When you allow discrimination, you know, this idea that a conviction record is proof of future behavior, if you have, if the recidivism rate is 50%, that means that 50% of the people who get out are going to go commit a crime again. And that means the other half are victims of discrimination, unjustified, prejudiced, irrational discrimination when they are denied housing. When our human rights ordinance was passed, the housing section of it in 1979, our human rights officer was a man named Vernon Brown, who had previously worked as a parole officer. And he explained to the city council that the best chance for keeping a person with a prior conviction record from committing a crime again is if that person has a stable job and stable housing, preferably with their family. Allowing discrimination in housing or employment based on conviction record, notwithstanding bona fide occupational qualifications, like, for certain jobs like taxi driver, undermines efforts to reduce recidivism. And they'll also point, I mean, there are a number of arguments, we discussed this on the city council about seven years ago, and the council defeated a proposal to take away the human rights protection. There are lots of dangerous people out there who don't have felony conviction records, like rapists who plead to misdemeanor sexual abuse. And there are lots of people with felony conviction records whose crime was, they stole, they shoplifted 15 bucks and they were prosecuted for felony burglary, which is a considered forcible felony. And in fact, I think one of the biggest problems when you just take the word, you know, felony conviction, is that it's so huge, it involves so many people. And the people who this will be used against will mostly be black people. And that is because when you just say, "Oh, it's okay for landlords, they can do whatever they want," and that they can just check criminal background records on the circuit clerk's website, though, many of them will check the people they're nervous about. Who are they nervous about? They're not going to check me, and they're not going to check you, they're going to check people who are black. And so even though the intent would not be racially discriminatory, the effect most definitely would be. And there's not always proper information on there, they don't know the details. I don't think the fact that a person can afford to buy a piece of real estate automatically qualifies that person to be a Champaign County Circuit Court judge. But the proposal of changing our human rights ordinance is to empower any person who happens to be a landlord to extend the sentence of any convicted felon beyond what sentence was given by the judge. This would be a very, very bad thing. We've had to fight this. It was not actually a fight when this passed in 1979, we had to fight it seven years ago. At the time, the mayor was silent, and frankly, I was appreciative of that, as long as he didn't weigh in in support of it. And it was my impression that he did not think it was a good idea. And I don't know what's going to become of this now, because it's become an election issue, but I hope that people will think about all the folks who have felony convictions for shoplifting, felony convictions for possession of a very small amount of a controlled substance, who are no longer drug users, and how you think our community would be a better place if these folks could not live with their families and if these folks, and if we had a larger number of people who were homeless, who, based on the fact that they once got in trouble, paid their debt to society, but we don't want to bother with the detail of doing it right, so we just have this sweeping, "Hey, if they're an ex-con, we're going to go encourage landlords to keep them out." I think that's a big mistake. And I'll say one more thing, I said this when my opponent tried to use this issue against me in the last election. You want to do something to protect tenants, how about prohibiting landlords from hiring sexual predators in any job where they have keys to tenants' apartments? We have no protection for that right now. I got a call from a woman who lived in an apartment complex in southeast Urbana, who told me she saw her apartment manager on the Sexual Offenders website. There's no protection against that. That would be actually trying to address a real safety issue. The fact that a person lives in your apartment building does not give them any more access to your apartment than if they own a house down the street. And the whole idea that ex-cons whose families have enough money to buy a house are okay, the rapist who buys a house next door to you, that's just fine, but the ex-con with the conviction record from, who got out four years ago for shoplifting, he's the danger. It's irrational, it's prejudiced, and its effect is purely discriminatory against the poor. And I think that was Ms. Ammons' point, is that empowering landlords to discriminate is just saying, if you can afford to buy a house, it's okay that you're an ex-con, you get a second chance, you even can be Champaign County coroner. But if you can't afford to buy a house, then you don't deserve the same human rights to housing and employment as everyone else. I just think that's wrong.
Thank you very much also. Yes. Ms. Genowick?
Just in terms of council or committee input, I just wanted to correct a statement that was made in the press about me today, that I was not running for reelection. And just for the public who may be listening, I actually am running for reelection. I don't face a primary challenge, and I will be running for election in Ward Two in the general primary, April 5th.
Well, thank you for clearing up that interesting point. Are there any other comments to be made at this time? Very thoughtful comments, thank you. Okay, that does close the public input discussion. We'll move now to the items that are on the agenda, the first being an ordinance, number 2005-02-019, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement with the Tatman Family LLC. Do we have any report on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Walden?
We're pleased tonight to bring to you the ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with the Tatman Family LLC. Paul Tatman is a little bit under the weather, he won't be here tonight, but he will be here next Monday, if you have any questions for him. What we want to talk about is the Jewel facility on South Philo Road. And I guess as background, let's start here. Talking about the Jewel facility on South Philo Road, the property is adjacent to the OSCO facility and adjacent to the vacant Kmart building. The Jewel building is considered as the Kmart building is basically an empty Big Box. We've been working with Mr. Tatman for some time now to acquire the property and to begin the redevelopment of this particular parcel. As you remember, last week, we adopted the plan, which is entitled the Philo Road Business District Revitalization Plan. And in that plan, we outlined some of the objectives for South Philo Road, as well as action plans to get us where we want to be. I think a couple of things that are important to point out about this proposed development is that it's consistent with that plan in several respects. The first is that it's the reuse of a large Big Box facility. It provides for an intensity on the lot that's not present at the current time. It provides for outlot development adjacent to Philo Road, which will provide not only retail opportunities, but also would give us, I'm going to switch exhibits here, would give us the possibility of pushing some of the activity towards Philo Road, which we think is important. Additionally, with the conversion of the Jewel facility into an employment center, we have the benefit of the additional jobs. As you probably noted in the press releases that went out, and the ribbon cutting for the first third of the building to be rehabbed, the facility is shifting to an office use, and we've been calling it and referring to it as an employment center. We expect with the developer that the other portions of the building will be remodeled and reused in a similar fashion. So that is generally the plan and how it's consistent with the action plan that we've given to you. I feel that this is, could be a template for us. It's going to be really difficult, as many of us have discussed, to redo, reuse some of the larger boxes that we've had go vacant. It's unrealistic to believe that other large-box users are going to acquire and reuse those buildings. But if we can rehabilitate these facilities into other uses and then provide retail opportunities on the outlots, as we've shown here, I think that moves us towards a vitality for that area that perhaps will get us where we want to be. So I kind of consider- So, I kind of consider this as a template for something that we might look at for other uses, large boxes that are vacant in the area. Specifically to the agreement, it's fairly straightforward. There, as always, we're looking at the meat of the agreement being those obligations of the developer and those obligations of the city. In this particular project, the obligations of the city are financial. They include the allocation of three of our loans and grants for the redo of the Jewel facility. One of those office uses is just in the process of being completed, and we expect that to go forward. It allocates two additional loans for the division into additional tenant spaces in that building. Secondarily, the agreement envisions providing at least one loan and grant for each of the two outlots that front on Philo Road. Thirdly, the agreement provides for a grant of $1,000 for opening expenses for the new retail that would open in these buildings. This is similar to the East Campus commercial incentive that we provided. In addition to the loan, we provided $1,000 for, for opening expenses for the, the new retail uses. So, it's similar in that respect. So, primarily what we have here is an allocation of monies in a program that we currently have, which is the rehabilitation program that we've utilized in the area. The developer's obligations are, again, oh, let me touch on one other thing. Another obligation that we have entered into in this agreement and are recommending to you is in the next budget, I won't be doing the budget amendment for these projects, for this project right now, but in the budget that you will receive in the future, actually, you may not be voting on that, the new council will be voting on that. But staff will, one of you will, at least. The council will entertain, at that time, $20,000 to undertake landscaping improvements on Philo Road. We're just in the initial phases of the planning for that, but we're looking at trying to develop some form of landscaping, not necessarily like the downtown, but, but would have a visual impact and yet be relatively maintenance-free. And so, our preliminary budget estimates for getting that done are in the $20,000 area. It was important to the developer, in this case, that the city undertake the improvement of the aesthetics on, on Philo Road. So, that's what we agreed to do. In terms of the developer's obligations, the developer must continue to construct the private redevelopment. Again, part of that's already been constructed. The other portions of their Jewel building will need to be rehabilitated. And then we have the two outlots that are being marketed for various retail uses, including restaurant for Philo Road. So, those will be undertaken by the developer. The additional obligation of the developer would be to do a minor replat. We need to divide the lots in a fashion that is conducive for their use as retail. The exhibit that I provided you was a rough exhibit, the engineering has not been completed on that, but the developer has engaged the services of a local engineer to begin to replat these lots in the manner that was suggested. So, those are primarily the, the main points in the agreement. Again, as in all of these agreements, we have obligations of the city, and we have obligations of the developer. In this case, the agreement that you have before you is abbreviated, and that is not a TIF agreement. When we, when we do the TIF agreements, and you'll see four, five points in some of the others that you've done, we have much more information and more requirements in those agreements because of the use of funds. In this case, the funding for this will need to come from our Economic Development Fund, since we do not have a TIF in this location at this time. So, again, the budgetary impact of that will be proposed when we publish the budget, but it will be from the Economic Development Reserve Fund. And we estimate that somewhere between $16,000 and $100,000 will be necessary to undertake all of the improvements that are talked about here, including the landscaping on Philo Road. So, I'd be happy to entertain questions now about the development agreement.
Counselor. Ms. Dan.
Thank you. The FOP call centers would be in the actual Jewel store space itself, not one of the outlots, is that correct?
That's correct.
And is there anything else that we know at this time that's going into the Jewel space?
Well, the, if you'll recall, the history of this was, of course, we had the Jewel, OSCO uses that were there. And then, the school district rented the building from a local developer and made considerable improvements to it for almost an office use. And then, that developer switched gears and changed and gutted much of the interior and put in a storage facilities in that building. So, those are being taken out now and being marketed for the office employment centers. So, the higher and better use in this case is, is for us to promote the office use or other uses other than storage.
Yeah, I don't doubt that, I was just wondering, because I remember the store, I voted on something related to the storage, I wonder what happened to that? So, it's going out.
It's going out.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions concerning this? Danielle?
This is, your, your brief was helpful, there is a couple of things I didn't quite understand with the memo. Is it that we would be providing an interest subsidy of $60,000 to $100,000 on each of three?
All of them.
Okay, all of them.
Everything together.
Okay. And so, and are there things, I'm sorry if you mentioned this already, I was trying to compose my thoughts. Are there stipulations in here that say things like, storage, if, if the person that comes in, or the business that comes in, is storage, it's excluded? If it's, there are certain excludable kinds of uses? Or does the interest subsidy apply no matter what the use is, office, storage, retail? Of course, we would like retail, but...
Right. Well, the, the, the loan program that we have has various regulations to it and restrictions to it. And the way we view this, and Dennis had mentioned this to me earlier today, is that we write those in a, in a, in a fashion that are fairly prescriptive, that you don't get a grant unless you have retail. Because those are automatic, we administer those, you establish the guidelines and we administer them. In the context of a development agreement, we have much more flexibility for these larger projects. And in this case, we felt that it was in the interests of the city, even if it were office, to promote the reuse of the building. If it were just a straight loan and grant per our guidelines, they would not get the grant component. So, in this, in the context of this agreement, the conversion to office or employment center would be eligible. Now, it can't remain storage, it has to be changed to a new use.
So, it can't...
It has to be changed to a new use and remodeled for a new use to be eligible. So, you can't just receive that for what's there. So, that has to go away and something else go in there. So, in the context also, in the, the regulations for the loan program, they're in your packet, they also don't talk much about new construction. And we felt that, in this case, particularly along Philo Road, that we should use this program, even if it was service, or office, or retail, but really primarily we're after retail, but any sort of new construction that brings activity along Philo Road in these outlot settings is probably in our interest. So, we've tried to make those eligible by this agreement.
And just two, that's helpful, two follow-up questions. It sounds like the use would have to change, but what if the, what if one of the new tenants, so FOP's there, and then a new tenant is storage, would, could this be used to convert the space to storage units?
Well, we're not going to allow it for storage.
We wouldn't? And there, and, and the development agreement does not tie our hands in that regard?
I do not believe it does.
And if...
There's also, if you look at those guidelines, it also gives us quite a bit of discretion at the...
Yeah, that's what...
Right.
It was a little unclear exactly what, at what point do we, do we have control over what goes into the space and if we don't? I, I trust that if you...
I assure you that we're not going to provide the incentive for a storage use.
Now, just another concern that I have, I mean, overwhelmingly, I support this, I think, I think this is the right direction to go. The other concern I have, though, is just, I try to do some calculations, I don't have the numbers to actually do accurate calculations, but here's my concern. Office space in downtown is very, is fairly expensive. Office space at Philo Road, less expensive, that's good, we need office, we need more activity in Philo Road. Office is a component of mixed use. But if we are, if it ends up that we're subsidizing office, are we, is there, is there a danger that we would drain offices from other parts of Urbana because there's this subsidized office space on Philo Road? And we'd actually be draining office uses to the, more to the periphery of the town, which I think we all understand is not in the best interest of Urbana? And does, and if so, how does this protect against that?
Well, let me give that a shot.
Okay.
That's a good question. The, in my thinking about it, is that most of our office uses in downtown are typically going to be involved in some form of development agreement, which are heavily subsidized through the use of TIFs districts. I mean, that's what we have them there for, because some of the costs are higher in the downtown area for the reuse of these buildings. For example, the one the mayor just talked about, at Five Points, I mean, you know, to tear down these blighted buildings, do the environmental and do the work necessary to focus investment in the core of our city, takes special effort. And the, the downtown TIF districts provide the avenue for these projects. New office projects in downtown Urbana, whether they're part of a multi-use facility, redo Lincoln Square, or other proposed buildings that we may be looking at, will have some sort of incentive, for sure, within the TIF district. And those, I mean, there's no comparison of the advantages of the TIF district to these small loan programs that we provide in the periphery. So, are we providing, is the government interceding in a way that provides a greater incentive to move out versus in? No, because we're providing these pretty heavy incentives in the core. So, that's my shot at it.
Yeah, well, that's a good answer, and I think it, it applies for new businesses. I think the question I have is, what about existing office businesses where the infrastructure improvements have already been made, or there weren't, there wasn't a need for infrastructure improvements in the core? And, you know, leases for office are anywhere between a year, three years, six years, you know, they're not, they're not 10-year leases usually. And so, an office looks and says, "Well, I can move out because there's this subsidized office space on Philo Road."
Yeah, I think, I think those others are going to be determined as a business deal between the tenant and the owners, what the terms are, the price, the, you know, how long they get the lease, what the improvements are, does the tenant make the improvements, the owner make the improvements? There's a lot of variables there. And I don't think this is, what we're doing is substantial enough variable to alter a decision in that regard, in that specific instance that you were talking about.
Okay. And just, just one final question on that issue. If, and I, and I assume this is not Tatman's intention, because I think their, yeah, Tatman family is interested in bringing new businesses into the area and has done a good job in doing that. But if, if that Tatman family was to bring to you an agreement of, to basically say, "Well, we want to cash in on this interest subsidy for this office, which used to be in downtown Urbana, to move here," does the city have the power, after we sign this a development agreement, to say no?
We do not have the right to pick the tenant.
Okay.
If it's, whether it's an office use, or a retail use, or, I mean, if it's consistent with the zoning ordinance, which controls, we don't have really the right. It's within these categories, we can't really say no.
So, you're saying that in this particular development agreement, we could not write into it, you know, this is committee, we're not, we're passing it tonight.
Oh, yeah.
So, next, between now and next week, you're saying that, that we, we cannot think about, or we cannot write into the agreement that existing office businesses in Urbana are exempt from the interest subsidy that's in here? You're saying we can't do that?
No. All I was saying is that this document does not provide for that.
Okay. So, in your, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, we can discuss this a...
Well, I mean, to answer you, just to get to the point, we would need to negotiate that with the developer, to see if that would cut out. I mean, I don't think that's what they're trying to do, but, you know, it could be that there was a situation where one would move for the other, and, you know, maybe it was fine with both landlords, so, do we prohibit that? I don't know. So, I guess that's something we would need to talk with the developer about.
Yeah, I guess I would be interested before, before we vote on this next week to see...
No, I was certainly, you have the power to suggest that that's something that we do, I was just trying to answer, it's not there now.
Okay, that, that makes it clear.
And I would be happy to, to look into that for you.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Okay. Councilman Hayes, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement. I had to do a lot of reading and ran across those initials, R.I.P. And I didn't know, really, if it was rest in peace or what. But, I found it, it was a redevelopment incentive program. So, my question, my question is, this Philo Road Business District Redevelopment Incentive Program. And you have all the guidelines and everything. Is this strictly for this business district? And if there was another business district, would the guidelines change? And how, how large an area are you considering a business district?
If I could go to the Elmo. Our, our current district, and I don't think we've changed it since this, we've done this, is generally in the area that's outlined here. And you can see that Florida Avenue is on the north. Florida Avenue is on the north, and then we pick up the Kmart building and Sunny Crest Mall, and then we go to County Market, down to Colorado with the Jewel building, and then, and then down to the Jerry Shopping Plaza. So, that's generally, I don't think we've tweaked it since we did this. Have we made any changes to it? It's TNE one?
That feels for the study.
I'm sorry.
This is, this is...
Okay, all right. I didn't think we changed it. And so, that's generally the area that we have, this program, that businesses within that area are eligible. Now, keep in mind, Jim, that the, all of the downtown is included in TIF One and TIF Two. All of Cunningham Avenue from the downtown out to O'Brien's is in TIF Four. And then, some portions of the business area that we have on University Avenue, where the Hampton Inn is located, is in TIF Three. So, most of our business areas, particularly those that are more urban, are in some sort of district, or some form of program is available. I have to say that we are, I mean, we are looking at this area, I mean, one of the things in the plan was to look at possibility of TIF and the possibility of enterprise zone. And we're studying those at the present time. The, actually, to be quite honest with you, the enterprise zone approach may be the more appropriate for this area, if, depending on lots of factors, but we're looking at both of those right now. That's your direction.
The, if you would go to the enterprise zone, that would, in a way, you get incentives to provide jobs for people in that area?
Well, there are a couple of things about the comparisons, and I don't want to, I don't want to put out information here, because we haven't finished our review of this, but, but certainly, there are many things in, in the enterprise zone that could be valuable to the area. One is that we, there is, there is the, some portion of the tax abatement that's automatic, which is the county and the city if we extend the zone. There's the exemption on sales tax for material purchases, which is, on large projects, is significant and could be a, a major tool for us in that area. And then there are the state incentives for job creation and tax credits that could be applied to the redevelopment area. The thing about the enterprise zone is we can do it without, we can do it relatively quickly, without a lot of consultants or outside legal expenses or consulting expenses. The TIF district, which we're not ruling out, is just a longer process, more than a year, and, you know, a good $50,000 in soft class. So, you know, those are just some of the factors that we're looking at.
Is that all? Counselman Alex?
I just wanted to follow up on the challenge question and ask, is it, is it safe to summarize your answer to the issue about cannibalizing other uses in Urbana? That the incentives that are being provided in this district are comparable to incentives that are being provided in most of the other commercial areas of the city, whether through TIF?
What I was trying to say in the most diplomatic terms was that the incentives in this area are frankly less than they are in other areas, because that's those, because of the tools we have available to us. So there would not be a migration from one area to that area if it was based solely upon incentives, because there are more elsewhere.
Clearly, if we, if we provided so many incentives that there was an area, an area of Urbana where businesses could locate rent-free, we'd expect a lot of businesses to locate there, but the argument here is that the incentives are relatively even throughout the city, and so that's not likely.
And, you know, and incentives are just one factor. They're, you know, the location plays a huge role, the space plays a huge role, the terms of the agreement play a huge role, and this is just one factor. We like to think it's enough in some cases to make a difference, but it's just one of many factors.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question myself. Is it typical to provide three different grants? We're talking about about $60,000 grant and a $6,000 interest grant, and then a $1,000 opening grant subsidy to a single building? Now, with the Jewel complex, it sounds like it's going to be divided into three, and that each individual parts will be able to receive the same funding grant, as if they were like three different entities. And I, we have one developer here, so I'm just kind of curious about how that breakdown would occur, or why.
No, it's the same thing that we've done with Sunny Crest Mall, or Lincoln Square, or downtown businesses where there's multiple tenants in one building. You know, I think we have, over the years, I think we have three with, for example, where you have heel-to-toe, side-by-side. So, no, we've done those. It's very much similar to what we did with East Campus Commercial, those, the loan, the grant, and the incentive to open. So it's consistent with our past practice.
Is there any more questions on this item? Does anybody make a motion to forward it?
I move to send this item to council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, the motion is moved forward and seconded. We take a vote. All those who'd be in favor of moving this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We'll move on to item six on the agenda, an ordinance number 2005-02-020, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a development incentive agreement with Champagne Urbana Motel Limited Partnership Holiday Inn Express. Do we have any report on that for council?
Again, I'm very excited about this project. Our, our goal here is to seek authorization for the mayor to enter, to authorization for the mayor to enter into agreement with the Champagne Urbana Motel Partners to construct, I had 72, a 74-room Holiday Inn Express motel, and then also to seek cooperative efforts in expanding the adjacent convention center facilities. This project will be located on the existing lot. I have a large copy, I'm going to pass around, and I have one for... This graphic illustrates the location of the, the footprint of the new facility. As you can see, as I move this down, there, there's the parking lot and the, and the existing Holiday Inn convention facility. So the large grassy area that is located to the north of this facility, adjacent to I-74 is just to the north of this, along the frontage road, is the location. The, the entrance of this will be, as you can see on the large map, we have two streets adjacent to this, but I'm pretty sure we're going to address this off of Colani. The, the developer is proposing to spend at least $4 million on this development. The obligation of the city, which I'll go into, is approximately $75,000. The principals of this development partnership are Mr. Glenn Garrison and Mr. George Johnson. Jeff Edwards, who represents the manager of the Holiday Inn, is here, can answer questions if we get to that. Mr. Garrison and Mr. Johnson were not able to be here tonight. But we've been working with them for some time now. The, the nexus of this came with the condos for college project. If you will recall, there was a competition, if you will, for the purchase of the 10-acre tract, which is immediately adjacent to the Melrose, current Melrose facility, and just south of the Holiday Inn, existing Holiday Inn convention facility that fronts on Lincoln Avenue. You might also recall that Mr. Garrison sent you a letter opposing that resounding. Since that time, we've, we've had a great relationship with Mr. Garrison and we've, and Mr. Johnson, and we've worked towards finding alternate sites for the projects that they were proposing to do on this land that was sold. And so this is, this is really a home run for us, to be able to do the project that the council approved, and then take the project that was competing for that and locate it in the area. So it's a fairly major success story for us. The, that's the background. I won't go into too much, we have a lot of history with these developers over the last decade or so, because they were pioneers in, in developing the Holiday Inn. At the time that was developed, we had the vacant area out there, it was approximately 50 acres that was vacant. We were able to work with these developers in the state of Illinois, as well as other property owners, to actually build the detention facility for all of this area. It's pre-built and is on state of Illinois right-of-way. And we were able to work through many, many of the, of the development and construction obstacles 10 years ago to these, to this area. So again, these developers are able to, again, benefit from some of the work that they did a decade ago. The property is currently owned by the folks who own the Holiday Inn. The, the Holiday Inn Express will be located on the same property. As with the Jewel project, we will be going through a minor plat process to divide the lots. It'll probably be held by separate corporations, but the principles will be the same. The commitment, in this case, of the city, again, just these agreements, particularly the non-TIF agreements, are fairly simple. You'll just turn to the developer obligations and covenants and the city obligations. And what we are agreeing to do as a city is there are approximately $75,000 in costs that have been identified for what we call infrastructure, which are utilities, sewer, street stub, extensions. Those have been identified as city responsibilities in this project. The second phase of this project is to work collaboratively on the expansion of meeting space and convention facilities. And the city has agreed to work with them on a preliminary design basis to do the things that we need to do, to work with the developers to see if this is possible. So we're committing to this collaborative effort. The, the third thing that is potentially an issue that we, we need to address is the interstate-oriented signs at this location. If you drive on the interstate, you can see some of the interstate-oriented signs. There's Ramada, there's their famous eats sign. There's a, there's a gas station sign. The, there are some particular issues here. We need to be able to prove for franchise purposes that visibility of these signs are, is achieved from both an east-west basis along, along the interstate. We're not quite sure at this point if the height limit works. There are several factors that have come into play here, including trees that have grown over the years that are located. We don't want to tear down any trees, so we want to be able to get this sign above, above these treetops. So we're going to have to work with the developer and the zoning board to make sure that those things happen. I don't even know for sure if a variance is needed, but if it is, we agree to, to work with the developer. The developer's obligations are to construct as soon as possible the Holiday Inn Express. Worked with the engineer and the developers every day, and plans are progressing, and they're looking at getting into the ground just as soon as possible, get this thing going. Second phase of this is a longer-term project, over a year, and that is to, again, jointly explore the feasibility of expanding the convention center facilities. So those are the obligations of the city and the obligations of the developer. Again, this is an area that's not located within a TIF district. So when we have to do an infrastructure extension, those are going to come from either economic development funds, or CIP, or other non-TIF-related dollars. So, and that's the case that we have here. So we are seeing some developments that aren't inside our TIFs that require some city assistance, and our mechanism to do that is our economic development fund. Again, the, it's just great that we're able to work with the developers on this project. I thought, you know, this was the alternate project on the other 10 acres, I thought we had lost that, and as we went for the burden hand, these are the two in the bush.
Thank you. Does any council member have a question for Mr. Walden? Yes?
One question regarding parking. I assume that the existing parking is not sufficient to accommodate this new facility, or would it be?
It hasn't been determined yet.
Okay.
We do have the provision, the ordinance allows for shared parking between the two facilities, and there's a reduction of 15% for that. They have not laid out the parking yet.
Okay.
And that's something that'll happen.
I'm just concerned about the size of the site. I think obviously to the extent that they can, I think it's a terrific location, because obviously they can leverage off their existing parking. It's, you know, adjacent to the, right across the street, literally, from the competition, which is good for, for, for that business. I think, you know, I almost think it's a better site than the Lincoln Avenue site, because it's not as, as, you know, potentially valuable piece of frontage, but at the same time, it's located where we can share resources and amenities with the.
It's actually a better use of land.
Developers' other property. My concern was just it's a pretty small site, and I was wondering if the intention would be to share parking with the existing use, and then add parking for the existing use as part of this future expansion, or, or what the plan was there?
That's a good question. What's going to happen is, is that the current parking is currently being reviewed for redesign. You'll notice that it's not maximized in the area. There are significant numbers of spaces that can be picked up by reworking the existing parking. It is true, Alex, that this is, Mr. Alex, that this is a, a shared parking scenario, and so there will be shared parking. It is also true that if we go to Phase Two, which is the expanded convention facilities, that there will need to be more parking.
Okay. I think that answers my question. I just wanted to make sure that developers comfortable with the size of the parcel relative to the need for both the space and parking.
Are there, are there further questions on this? Okay, is anybody would like to, oh, yes.
Yeah, I'd make the motion to send this ordinance to council with a recommendation for approval, second.
Okay. The motion has been made to send it to council, and it's seconded. Is there any discussion at this point, Ms. General?
Yeah, just, I just think this is a great development agreement. I think that it pays for itself within a year. I think that you had mentioned the funds would come out of the ED fund, but I think that's almost like we're loaning ourselves the money, because we get the money back in a year, so it's, it's a very good development agreement, and I thoroughly support it.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Just want to thank Mr. Hayes. This past summer, when, when we had the issue of the condos at the same site, or very close to the same site, I think there was a lot of pressure to turn down the condo site for, because we were waiting on whether this would come or not come. And, oh, I'm glad Mr. Hayes led the way for supporting the condos, and now, as they say, we've got both, we've got both projects, and, and so I just wanted to express my appreciation to Mr. Hayes for taking the leadership on supporting the condos plan and really pointing that out to council. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
Mr. Rivers, just let me say, as, from the, say, staff perspective, is, on both of these development agreements, these, we've worked and developed relationships with, with these developers over a number of years, and they're making significant investments in the city of Urbana. Mr. Johnson and Mr. Garrison have been big advocates of the city of Urbana and have, over a long number of years, and are really stepping up to the plate on these developments. And Mr. Tatman, as you know, is working on all ends of the city of Urbana. Downtown, the southeast Urbana, east Urbana, and is investing millions and millions of dollars in the city of Urbana. We, we need to, we need to be appreciative of the confidence that these developers have shown in, in our community. So, thanks so much.
Well, I know that I have personally attended meetings in the conference rooms of the existing hotel structure, and it has a really nice atrium, meeting area, and it's nice to know that this is going to continue and be a larger event for the city. Okay, so we've had a motion to advance this to council. I think we should have a vote. Would there be a, all those who are in favor of sending this to council with approval, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? None? Okay, it passes unanimously. We're going to move now to the next item, which is number seven, an ordinance number 2005-02-021, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the use of a right-of-way, Kohler Avenue, between University Avenue and Sassafras Alley. I love the word Sassafras Alley. My favorite tree. Mr. Bill, I'm, Mr. Bill.
Thank you.
A report, sorry.
Carl Hospital Foundation is desirous to, and needing to install a new electric service to their facilities, and they had looked at various ways or routes to run new underground power lines from a substation, which is just south of the tracks along Kohler. And the only route that has the necessary room to do so would be within the Kohler Avenue right-of-way. To allow someone that doesn't have an existing agreement or franchise agreement with the city to use the city right-of-way, we need to enter into an agreement or license agreement. We have done several of these in the past, especially with the University of Illinois as an example. But in this case, they would like to occupy part of the, what would be the northbound lanes of Kohler Avenue between the substation and the South Clinic. And in the basement area of the northwest corner of the South Clinic is where they would enter. So part of our right-of-way code of ordinances requires then that there be a maintenance fee involved, too, and it's a cost per foot, and this would be included in here. There's about 350 or so feet that they would be occupying the Kohler Avenue right-of-way, so we would be billing them annually for occupying this particular space along Kohler. The agreement language is fairly standard from other similar types of agreements, and I'll stop and try to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions to the, Mr. Gray? Ms. Wyman?
How long is that area going to be out of use for the installation?
The installation, actually, we have not gotten the contractor's schedule details yet. They're in the traffic control plan, so those details still have to be worked out, but my guess is this would be a several-week situation, where the northbound street would be torn up, and then they will resurface, they will mill and resurface the east half of the street, kind of the centerline. they will mill and resurface the east half of the street, kind of the centerline joint, all the way to the curb. So, even though the trench will be a few feet wide, they'll actually repave the entire width per our codes. But I can probably answer that question for you at a later time when I get more information on the contract itself.
That would be great. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, was there a motion to approve this?
I'm going to send this to council for approval.
I second.
Mr. Hayes and Ms. Wyman, is there any discussion at this point on the motion? Okay. All those who would be in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, the next item, item number eight on the agenda. An ordinance, number 2005-02-022. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Edge Scott Fire Protection District. And we must have information about this, I'm sure.
Well, we get... Sorry, I have a few more maps here to look at. Anybody know how to turn on this Elmo guy here?
I think you have to say "Elmo, please," and it magically... There we go.
All right.
Our control person, this is...
There we go. All right. Outside of the City of Urbana city limits, various fire protection districts provide fire protection services. When the city annexes property that is within those fire protection districts by statute, it automatically comes out of the fire protection district and into the city fire protection area. The statute does allow for the fire protection districts to challenge those annexations and... or disconnections from the fire protection district. And in that situation, if the fire protection district can show either of two things, one, that the annexation substantially reduces their ability by reduction of the tax base typically to provide their fire protection services, or two, if the annexation causes a non-contiguity of any two areas of the fire protection district, then the fire protection district can keep the annexed areas in the fire protection district. The... In order for the fire protection district to do this, it needs to file a challenge in court, which with respect to a couple of annexations that we did several years ago, was what happened. Those annexations related to... Well, I think they all basically came out of the Bing Grove fights from a few years ago. The city at the time annexed... a chunk of... annexed a chunk of the Berenger Commons subdivision, which is this black roughly triangular shape And as well, the city annexed Baker's Lane, which is a road that runs right here next to the Scotswood subdivision right here. This area that's shaded in gray here in general is Edge Scott Fire Protection District territory. And as you can see, if you look at this, this is I-74 up here, the yellow line. As you can see by looking at this, when the city annexed this black area, this Berenger Commons area, it caused a physical separation of these two sections of the fire protection district territory. At the same time, when the city annexed Baker's Lane, just that one road, which was already city property but for some reason had not yet been annexed, the... that caused a... this is also fire protection district area here. That one strip annexation there separated this fire protection district territory from this fire protection district territory. So, Edge Scott challenged those annexations, and over the years, the city attorney's office, actually Jack Waller, negotiated with the fire protection district attorneys a way to settle this challenge. The idea being to just make sure that there's no confusion about jurisdiction, that we all know which fire protection district or fire protection service actually is providing protection in particular areas. Interesting to note that if the fire protection district successfully challenges these annexations, that does not actually affect the annexation status of the territory that's been annexed into the city. What it does, though, is it keeps that territory also at the same time in the fire protection district, and so it causes that potential for confusion among the two entities providing fire protection. The City of Urbana Fire Protection Department and the Edge Scott District. It also poses the potential for double taxation of those areas that wind up in both the City of Urbana and in the district. We'd like to avoid both of those problems. So, the settlement that was worked out with the fire protection district is very simple. It's to really just de-annex from the city two strips of land. One of those strips is right up here along the very north edge of the Berenger Commons area. It's a five-foot-wide strip, runs parallel to the Interstate 74 right-of-way, and would give a contiguity between this section here and this section here. Would connect at the Wheatley property over here, and then would connect to the fire protection district territory over here. The other part of the settlement is to de-annex a narrow strip of Baker's Lane. Let's see, here we have...
Oh, my.
This is a close-up of Baker's Lane. This strip between the dotted lines is Baker's Lane. This is Illinois Street. Over on this side here is the Scotswood subdivision. The de-annexation would be just this narrow chunk of Baker's Lane that would provide connection between Edge Scott territory over here and Edge Scott territory over here. The financial impact would be zero or virtually zero. It's a simple way to settle the lawsuit. The Edge Scott Fire Protection District is satisfied that it'll address their concerns about contiguity, and I recommend that it be adopted and that the mayor be authorized to enter into the settlement.
Okay, there's open to questions from council. Mr. Pat?
Thank you. What happens in the future if we want to annex these properties again, presumably it would be along with something else?
We have the ability to go back. We've... in discussions, I believe, with Edge Scott Fire Protection District, they have indicated a willingness to undo those things again in the future if need be.
Thank you.
And property owners are amenable to that as well.
Other questions? Mr. Alex?
What's the basis for the contiguity requirement? Is that something that they're imposing, or is that something that's from state law?
That's by state law.
Okay, so if they're not... Even if they said it's okay that this is across the street and the street's not... even if they consented to recognize that it's ridiculous to have to de-annex a five-foot-wide strip, which is obviously... I think it's actually a berm along Interstate 74, and it's going to be hard to drive a fire truck down.
Right.
Even if they said, yes, we agree it's ridiculous, it wouldn't help because it's state law requires that their territory be contiguous?
Well, the state law doesn't require that their territory be contiguous, but it allows them to challenge the disconnection from the fire protection district territory if the annexation of the city causes it to be non-contiguous. And they have...
I mean, it seems to me that if we've resolved the substantive issues that led to the challenge in the first place, which is presumably comes down to money, I'm not sure... I don't... I'm not sure I understand why we have to do these, you know, shenanigans with five-foot-wide strips of land.
It's been an interesting process, to say the least, in dealing with this issue. I guess at this point, I can say only that the fire protection district would be happy with this resolution as a settlement, and it would solve two significant problems for the City of Urbana at virtually no cost.
Okay. Does it affect the city's ability to annex other territory in the future in terms of forced annexation by surrounding and so forth?
Theoretically, it could with respect, I suppose, to the Scotswood subdivision because of that change in the Baker's Lane annexation. That would, at that point, cause Scotswood not to be surrounded. But Scotswood at this point is more than the 60 acres anyways.
Yeah, it's forever. But to clarify what you said earlier, if this did get to a situation where obviously there's substantial benefit to the city in annexing that territory, which would presumably only be because of what we could get to by annexing that territory and not because of the territory itself, that the city could at that point re-annex it with the consent of the property owners presumably, but that that would draw presumably another challenge.
Yes.
Which the worst possible outcome of which for the city would be that we'd end up with parcels that were getting taxed both by the City of Urbana for fire protection and by Edge Scott. So essentially, it's a... this is accommodation to simplify things jurisdictionally and to minimize the tax burden on the property owners rather than anything that the city is doing to... because we have to, should say.
Yeah, I think if in the future, if the city were to re-annex these territories that are... we're trying to de-annex tonight, and if the fire protection district were to again challenge those annexations, then the worst out... the worst possible outcome would be that would be right back to where we are right now, which isn't a terrible situation, but needs to be fixed.
But the situation, as I understand, is the city that the fire... the fire protection district cannot prevent the city from annexing that territory.
Right.
It can just say, if we do annex that territory, they may end up being able to collect taxes from land that's also in the city.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Hayes?
Edge Scott Fire Protection District. That's full-time. Fire district, I think.
Their volunteer service here.
Okay, so, my question is... How much of a problem... and I know there's been some discussions that have gone on before, but how much of a problem would it be for Urbana to exor the Edge Scott Fire Protection District like it did the University of Illinois Fire Protection District?
Well, that's a whole 'nother kettle of fish with a whole bunch of other political implications, and I don't think that this affects that situation at all.
Not at all, but I want to know what the possibilities are. Don't have these discussions come up before.
I think there have been some exploratory conversations over the years. I wouldn't say that they've progressed really substantially in any direction.
So, people in Edgewood, Edge Scott Fire Protection District would rather have a volunteer fire department than a full-time fire department.
I'm not sure that I can speak for the people over there. I guess it's a bigger... it's a much bigger problem, and I'm not sure that... well, it certainly is beyond the scope of anything... remotely beyond the scope of anything that we're talking about here.
Mayor, do you want to...
Well, I was just going to help answer Mr. Hayes's question that it's... I don't know if it's that people don't want to have, you know, would rather have a volunteer fire department than the city fire department, but it's just a whole bundle of services. A lot of people live outside the city because they want to pay lower taxes, and they're happy with fewer services. And it's just a whole bundle of services that if they were going to be annexed into the city, that, you know, they get, you know, a lot better services for police, fire, library service, a whole variety... Park District service, a whole variety of things. And a lot of people choose to live outside of the city deliberately, so they don't pay the higher taxes, but they don't get the services then either. And so, the fire protection district is just one of those. Now, you know, I think everyone's aware that, you know, our general philosophy is anything that looks urban should be in the city ultimately, but what ultimately means is, you know, it could be a couple decades down the road. You don't have any immediate plans for annexation, as has been discussed. It's too big to forcibly annex. And, you know, the last time the Park District tried to get them to voluntarily join the Park District, it was voted down. It was probably four or five years ago, I guess. And so, you know, there are no immediate plans to have them be part of the city or to start getting part of the services of the city. But ultimately, my guess in a few decades, why, it's probably in the cards, but exactly when is anybody's guess.
Okay, any other comments? All right, is there a motion to adopt this resolution, this ordinance?
I move to send this ordinance, number 2005-02-022, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Edge Scott Fire Protection District to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made to send this to council and to... it's been seconded. Those who would be in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and those who are opposed? Okay, it passes. Number nine, item number nine on the agenda, rental housing registration program. Councilwoman Pat?
Thank you very much. I'd like to tell you folks a little bit of background on this idea. As you know, for the last several years, a group of homeowners in a West Urbana neighborhood, involved in the West Urbana Neighborhood Association, have been wanting to see the city do something about enforcing the occupancy rules that have to do with how many people live in a single-family home. And for about the last 18 months, primarily at meetings of the university neighborhood... university neighborhood city committees, there has been discussion about looking... well, adopting proposals that are enacted in other university communities like Lafayette, Indiana, and Iowa City, Iowa, that require registration of property owners. And most important, specifically with regard to the issue of over occupancy, to actually try to enforce the... and monitor the occupancy of houses, to require property owners to sign an affidavit and to have their tenants sign an affidavit attesting to the number of people who'll be living in the house. If you look at the information in the pack, if you just flip over to the back page, the primary goal here, our intent in this, is to set up a program whereby a house cannot be rented unless the landlord has the tenants sign an affidavit like this. Something short and clear so that we can eliminate the problem that people who rent houses have no idea there's a law prohibiting more than foreign-related people from living together. And for those situations where people might be made aware of the law, but the property owner might try to convince them that it's really no big deal and they can get around it, the intent here is to communicate in a written document the tenant has to sign that actually that's not so, that this is a big deal, it's the law, and there will be trouble for violating it. The folks who worked on this, I mentioned this in the memo, but I just mentioned, I see one of them here tonight, Glenn Berman, Liz Cardman, Betsy Cronin, and Lisa Truel did extensive research of other cities to come up with this idea. And so, and they've come to me... they came to me several months ago saying, can we move on this already? It was a two-part proposal. One was to change our zoning ordinance, which you all recall we did about a month ago, to make it unlawful for a landlord to offer a place to rent for more than... to more than foreign-related people. And the second part of it was to have the landlords be accountable to the city on a routine basis whenever they lease. And that's what's proposed here today. Now, the proposal of program design before you actually affects all rental properties, not just single-family homes. It was our concern in drafting this proposal to bring to you that there might be a problem with having any... a registration required just of owners of single-family homes. There also has been discussion, and I know those of you who are candidates have been informed, where you've all discussed the idea of having all landlords register, and the mayor's talked about a licensing program that would involve property owners having to pay the city a fee for every rental unit they own for the purpose of paying the costs of housing inspection to beef up systematic inspection. It is not... in bringing this forward now, the intent, my intent here, and I think I accurately speak for the other people who were involved in this, is not to preclude or prevent any bigger, more elaborate program. In fact, knowing that's what some people have in mind, we drafted this as sort of like a skeleton that could be built upon. But I'll say, if it is possible... if people have hesitation about stepping into this now, if it's possible to have this rental registration apply only to single-family homes, the motivation for this being on the agenda tonight is to address the single-family homes. And perhaps we can hear some comment from the city attorney about whether that's possible. city attorney about whether that's possible. I want, I want to tell you something a little bit about timing, and I'll answer questions about the specifics here. It's, and I know it's, you all probably do know this because I've mentioned it before, but I just want to remind you, it's part of my everyday life, so I'm always aware of it. In six months, people are going to be, in the campus area, are going to be signing leases for the 2006, 2007 lease year. So if we do not have something in place, say by summer at the latest, then not only will we have missed this lease year and next lease year, but 2006, 2007 leases still will not in any way be monitored or regulated for compliance with, with occupancy standards. We'll be talking about the soonest anything would happen would be 2008. And especially since there are folks who've been talking about this since at least 2001, we'd have to get moving. So, that is, that is my intention for putting this on the agenda tonight, is to try to, to get something in place so that next, next fall, in six months, when landlords who own rental houses primarily in the campus area start advertising them to rent, and start actually signing those leases for the 2006, 2007 lease year, compliance with the law will be a component of, of that, that leasing activity. And that, and that's the intent here. What we're proposing here is that, and the intent is to not put an onerous burden on property owners, is that every property owner register with the city that they exist, and that if they are renting property, to be occupied by someone other than a member of their family, that they exist so that we have a record of them. There are, as I mentioned in the memo, close to 1,400, actually, this is 1,436, a few of those might be, might be actually vacant units, but say around 1,400 single-family homes occupied by someone other than the owner in Urbana. And, and then there are another almost 1,000 rental units that are duplexes. We, in this proposal, it proposes a fee of $25. The intent is something that covers the cost of running the registration program, which is basically a clerical job. And Glenn Berman worked up some numbers where it looks like actually the cost would probably even be less than $25 per owner. And, and the key requirement would be that in addition to registering with the city, the identity and contact information for whoever is responsible for the rental property, and registering that information never changes, that also every time the place is leased, the owner of a single-family home would have to register with the city an affidavit signed both by the owner and by the less seized, the tenants pertaining to occupancy. I'll stop talking now, see if people have questions.
Are there questions for Ms. Pat? Mr. Hayes?
When you, you know, mentioned about single-family homes.
Mm-hmm.
This document doesn't refer to, some people might have a home, and they might rent one, or room out to, to a senior citizen, or a college student, stuff like that. You don't want them to register, do you?
Uh, well, they were excluded, in order to make it simple, they were excluded. I don't, if that, if that were a deal breaker, if people thought, yes, we should do this, but they should have to register too, that's okay with me. I, I think the distinction here, though, was to, or the intention here was to focus on houses whose purpose is income property rather than the home, someone renting rooms out in their home.
Okay, I just wanted to.
As of best of, my knowledge, the, I won't say it never happens, but the over occupancy problem is primarily in, in the income property and not that an individual or family rent out bunches of rooms in their own house.
Any further questions? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
Could you point to the, the answer to Mr. Hayes's question about, does it include owner-occupied?
Um, it says, oh, I'm sorry, actually, in terms of, I was, I was answering the affidavit question, I'm sorry. I, I take that back, I'm sorry, Mr. Hayes, I just answered your question wrong. On the subject of the affidavit, that would be number six. Every single-family homeowner who offers a home for occupancy to persons other than the owner's family members shall be required to provide the affidavit. But actually, as far as the registration, what you have in front of you right now is, and I guess the reason I sound hesitant about this, because we talked about this briefly at the meeting Thursday, and I got the impression that there may be thought here at the administration, that there's really no reason to do this for every single rental property, and that we could do something more limited without it being a legal problem. But the actual, the correct answer to Mr. Hayes's question is, number one, it does say every owner of residential rental property shall be required to register with the city. So technically, I suppose a room in your house is, is residential rental property.
That's what, that's how it reads to me.
Yeah, that's you read, yes. But the affidavit was, would only apply to when a house is rented out to someone other than your family.
So, is, so everyone who's renting, what's the definition of, just so I understand, what's the definition of renting? You don't have to have a lease to be renting, right?
You, actually, under, under Illinois law, you always have a lease.
You always have.
But it does have to be a written lease. Now, what you mean, if you, if you exchange rent for housing, and if you change payment for housing, and actually, it doesn't even have to be payment, if you change, exchange anything of, of good and valuable, whatever. If someone gives something in exchange for getting to live there, then they're renting.
Okay. So if, so under this situation, if someone allows somebody to live in their house for free, I mean, they cook food for them or something, then they have to come to the city and pay $25 and, and register? I, I, I know I'm not talking about the majority of situations, I'm just trying to understand what the purview of this is and see if we can.
If you let a friend live with you and, and you don't charge them anything to live with you, then I don't know that, that they've got a very strong argument that they're a tenant, but, I don't know, maybe Mr. Hulse has a different, I'm not a lawyer, you know. I just know the one, the question I always come up with is, people think if they didn't sign a lease, there's no leases, like, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You, you take 100 bucks from someone to live in your house, you're a landlord.
Look, let me ask my questions backwards then, so you understand where I'm getting at. Do you, is the, is the fee annual or one time?
The, the proposal here is, it's every time ownership changes.
Every time?
Registration fee, every, yeah. So, an owner must register with the city to, to show they exist. At any time the ownership of the property changes, they would have to register.
Not every time the tenant.
Pardon me?
Excuse me.
Yeah, not the time what? I'm sorry.
With new tenants?
No, they would not have to pay a fee, in this proposal, every time they get new tenants.
Okay, and?
But they would have to file a new affidavit.
But they would have to file a new affidavit. And in our casual conversation, the mayor suggested they should have to pay some fee every time they filed affidavit, because that would be necessary to cover the cost of the program. It would probably be more fair to charge a lower fee for initial registration and some very nominal fee each time an affidavit's filed to cover the clerical cost.
Um, how would, how would landlords find out about this program once it starts?
Well, we have a general database, and in fact, Libby was going to send out the changes we made to the zoning ordinance on over occupancy and.
Send that out to landlords, so, you know, whether we get absolutely every single person,
we don't know. But then there is the, as was mentioned, the database of properties that are not owner-occupied, because you get a homeowner's exemption, a homestead exemption from the assessor if you declare it. Now, you know, some people don't know about it, and you can't necessarily declare it and so forth, but I think the majority of them do. But we have a pretty good way of getting a hold of it.
I, the, what it says here is a failure to register a property, first offense is $135. So, my concern is, I think this, I think this looks great. I think it's, we've needed it for a long time, until I saw this in our packet, and it may have been, I, I know you had given me a copy earlier, maybe I just didn't notice it then. I did not know this referred to owner-occupied, and I'm particularly worried about the person who is on a limited income, I'm particularly thinking of seniors in this case, who end up having the, the house because their children are gone, if they did have children, maybe the spouse is gone, they're trying to figure, and so they, here's a situation where they need to rent out some spaces to bring in income, they live in the space, they're supposed to pay $25 and register, they're not really part of the problem. I, I'm not sure if owner-occupied is part of the problem at all here anyway. And then if they happen to not know about it, because they're definitely not going to be in the database that the mayor just referred to, their first offense is $135. So, barring, barring the issue of owner-occupied, I think, you know, when people are running a house as a business, and they're running, not just a house, an apartment unit as a business, it's a commercial entity, I think there's a different threshold. People, this is their rental property, it's a, a source of income for them, it's not a source of personal housing for them. In that case, I think then it should be treated as such. And by, and I, and I support the idea of stepping up the, the expectations of people who have rental properties. But I don't consider owner-occupied situation, especially because I think, because of the particular people who I think are owner-occupied or oftentimes on limited incomes and bringing in extra rent in that way. I, I don't, I think this would be unfair burden for them, that piece. My only other question would be, would, would they have to, could, could people submit these things online so that it would expedite the process both for us and them? Or is it, or is it essential that we have printed signatures? Maybe this is just a technical question, but.
We were talking about that at the meeting, that the registration could be, I think the mayor was, was saying, this was all just last Thursday, the stuff was ready in the packet, that's, that the registration could be online. I can't see any reason why not. Mayor didn't think there was any reason why not. In terms of an affidavit, if the whole idea is that it's, it's, a person has committed perjury, if they've signed this statement, then I would think we'd want the actual paper.
So the affidavit would be a piece of paper, but the rental?
Right. Although, if we could ask Mr. Hulse, I don't know, if, where's it at these days as far as, as the things that are electronic as opposed to actual paper with signatures?
There, there is a state law that addresses that. It basically allows the parties to agree to use their electronic versions of their signatures.
The part, the persons who sign?
The persons who sign, yes.
So, the electronic version means it would have to be scanned into a computer and then transmitted?
I'm not a techie.
Okay. Do you know what that means? Does electronic versions of signatures, Ms. Chenoweth?
I can't speak to the law at all. I can only speak to what I see as common parlance, which is that people swear, you know, they, they affirm that, yes, this is my signature, and that it can, it does hold up in a court of law, and they check a little box, and, and then they initial their, or type their name. So, there are ways to do this, I just don't know. I, I can't speak to whether or not they've held up in a court of law.
But you're talking about scanned in, like a scanned in picture as opposed to someone just, like, typing on an email statement saying, my, my name here means my signature?
I'm, I'm referring to online forms.
Oh, okay.
That someone would fill out, this is a form that someone would fill out, and instead of, instead of a scanned signature, they have, you have ways of actually signing things online. I just don't know legally if they hold water, but I know there's certainly lots of examples of that, so.
Ms. Wyman, have comments?
I was just thinking, on electronic signatures, I haven't studied, looked at case law on it, but I know there are various examples, and not even necessarily of scanned in, where you just scan, you know, you'd fax something into a certain address that would just be scanned in, you wouldn't have to save the paper copy, but it could just be scanned in and saved, you know, as an Adobe Acrobat form. But even in the federal courts, when you're filing forms, you don't file your actual signature, you just file it on their system with your name, and, and it's good enough. So I would think, even if you're, if you're filling out the form online, that you could, and I don't know if the form would then just save your IP address. Obviously, if you're sending it in from, you're registering from the public library, that IP address is going to be maybe not so significant or important. But, you know, I, and actually, probably if we, when we pass this, we don't have to know whether electronic signatures are good or not. I think that's something that could be added administratively. But it seems that to, to be able to, to provide for that, certainly to be able to down, for landlords and for tenants, to be able to download these forms from, from the website, the city website, would be easy. And to be able to just fill out the forms online would help in, in reducing the cost for the city and for, then obviously for those who would be, who would be subject to these, these prices of registration fees. So I think to the extent we can, and work with the IP person to, to be able to take care of that, I think that would, that would help all parties.
Mr. Alex?
I'd just like to raise some issues, and I'll raise them here during the question time rather than later in discussion, just so you can have a chance to respond to them, because I'll raise some points that maybe haven't been fully thought through. First of all, let me say, I certainly appreciate the spirit in which this was brought, and I understand that the intention of regulating this longstanding problem of over occupancy of student houses is a serious problem. And it was in that spirit that I supported the zoning ordinance changes, which in theory give the city more enforcement tools to use against landlords as we go out and investigate these situations. Unfortunately, I think this is, is pretty broad and may have a lot of implications that we haven't really considered. You know, the right to rent a piece of property is one of the fundamental property rights that you get when you buy a piece of land, and you can resell it, you can rent it, you can do what you want to it. And I don't see that this relatively narrow issue of regulating over occupancy of student houses is compelling enough to justify the city intruding into the process of rentals to the degree, to the degree that's described here. And I think I might be able to support the notion of a rental property registry if we could address some of these issues, but there are a number of things that I'm concerned about. The first is, quite frankly, a privacy issue. We've already heard mention of the Patriot Act once tonight, and I think we're all sensitive to requiring registration of various things, including the requirement that one registers with the city to indicate whether or not one owns or rents one's home. The fact that any time any tenant rents a piece of property, I guess in this case, in a single-family home in the City of Urbana, that an affidavit has to be filed with the city listing the names of the people residing in that home, raises some serious privacy concerns that I think may overwhelm the desire to limit over occupancy of student houses. I'm concerned about the implication of a tie-in with code enforcement, that we're telling landowners, we want you to register, we want you to file these affidavits, and the reason that we want you to file these affidavits is so that we can more effectively enforce our building codes, enforce our occupancy requirements and so forth. My concern is that the law-abiding landlords are going to file the paperwork and be subject to code enforcement, just as they are now, and, and this isn't going to bother them. But the slum lords and the people who are renting substandard property may be discouraged from using written leases, they may be discouraged from formalizing relationships with tenants, and we may actually be creating a situation where the least scrupulous of landlords and the most vulnerable of tenants have an incentive not to participate in this program. And in fact, I think that probably may create more problems elsewhere in the city than we're solving for these student rental houses. I think landlords who want to avoid scrutiny are probably going to be the ones who we're going to have the most problems with, and they're going to be ones who are least likely to file the paperwork. I guess my final concern is, I think this applies to a lot of classes of situations which maybe we haven't considered. And in this, in this research that was done with how other communities have implemented these registries, I would expect that some of these may have been addressed. I would hope we could go back and look at how these classes of problems have been, or classes of situations have been dealt with in these other ordinances. Two of them I hadn't thought of are the ones that Mr. Hayes brought up, which was somebody renting a room in their, in their own residence, and the one that Ms. Chenoweth brought up, which was this notion of a, of a basically barter in lieu of rent among roommates. The ones that came immediately to mind from you when I was reading this is whether someone who, for example, goes on sabbatical and rents their house to a colleague or to a graduate student, has to register and has to file an affidavit or be subject to a fine, which, as I read it, is not $135, it's $635, because it's $135 for not registering and $500 for not filing the affidavit. It is not unusual in real estate transactions for single-family homes that where owner-occupied to be sold under a delayed possession agreement, with a leaseback, where basically the seller of the house sells the house to the person who's going to buy it, but continues to lease the house for three months or six months while the person who's buying the house sells their home or something like that. It's called a leaseback arrangement, this happens frequently. I'd like to know if those are going to be subject to this. There are situations in which roommates, boyfriends, girlfriends, domestic partners, whoever, who are sharing living expenses, one may create a lease to, lease to their roommates to allow that party to substantiate housing expenses for the purpose of alimony or. or obtaining housing allowances from employers, even though they may not be renting that from the owner of the building. That falls into the category of subleases. If I rent a single-family home as an individual with the right to sublease, to bring in roommates and sign leases with them, is the owner subject to penalties if I fail to register or to file affidavits on behalf of my subleases? I just feel like there are way too many things that we are regulating here, maybe without intending to regulate them, that I don't think it'd be responsible to give this to staff and say, "Okay, in 30 days, I want you to come back with a agreement that-- or with an ordinance." I feel that if we haven't thought through all the ways in which this applies to these other situations, it's pretty broad. Basically, I mean, there's only really two ways you can occupy a piece of property. You can either buy it or you can rent it. And so, in fact, what we're saying is, you know, we're interposing ourselves into a large percentage of the people in Urbana's means of obtaining their housing. And I think if we're trying to address over occupancy in student houses, that's great, but I think this may be, you know, way too big a-- way too big a tool to be using to address that particular problem. My personal preference, I guess, would be to work more on enforcing the laws we have, and I understand that the idea here was that this would make it easier to enforce the laws. But I think this work that we just did, you know, the staff and the plan commission and the city council spent a lot of time on over occupancy and on creating these tools to increase the fines and increase the liability of the landlords, and I would be comfortable, you know, I understand wanting to do this because we have these ridiculously forward-looking leases into 2007, but I think this is something that, given the broadness of the potential implications, deserves some more time to be looked at.
Any other comments or questions on this? Danielle?
I just, I want to add one more. In the list of complicated situations that Mr. Alex just listed, I would add one more, which is the situation, because in reading through this, it includes, you know, looking at the number of adri-- where was it? I've lost my piece now. I can't find it now, but it says that basically a tenant is somebody who's listed on the mailbox. I can't find that. But it-- the concern there is a situation where someone has been put in prison, they don't live in the location, but they receive mail at that location. Another situation is someone who's homeless, whether they be a wandering traveler or a homeless person who uses a place as an address but doesn't necessarily pay rent at that location, and therefore does not have a bed, is not-- is basically using that for the purposes of an address. So just to throw that into the mix of, I think, things that become complicated when looking, when defining, figuring out what is a tenant, and I guess that's the piece that you mentioned, a tenant is somebody who has their name on the mailbox and somebody who has-- there's some exchange going on, and it doesn't necessarily have to be monetary. And I guess we should look at all of those situations, including the situ-- like the prison situation in particular is the first thing that comes to mind, receiving mail, because mail in a prison is searched, but mail at a person's house is not, and so maybe, you know, private or personal information conveyed in that way, so...
That, I guess, raises something that I hadn't really considered, and that's, is it possible for some-- would it be possible to make something like this apply to properties which were intended to be rented to, let's just say, for, for the sake of argument, independent individuals? I mean, what I'm trying to get away from is, you know, renting sabbatical houses, renting a house to family, renting a house to a family, I mean, there's no-- I don't think we have a compelling reason to regulate those situations. Is there some way that we can classify what it is about a, you know, student group house that makes it subject to this kind of regulation? And say, you know, maybe this is the idea that it's intended to be leased, there are intended to be multiple leases for the same unit, or that there are intended to be names of multiple unrelated-- I mean, all my concerns, I think, are still valid, but I'm trying to see whether there's a way we can-- my concerns stem primarily from the notion that this is going to apply to a lot of people who don't live in group rental houses. And if there's some way that we can identify what the class of properties that have caused the problems is and narrow this down, I would be a lot more inclined to be supportive of it.
And I would just like to say, I'm quite curious, too, because it would apply to me, because I'm a landlord and I do have, you know, I'm an owner-occupancy home, but I do have a rental apartment upstairs, and I think the number of people and the intent of their use has a huge bearing on what we're trying to track down here. So, I mean, I do have some concerns, too. I like the overall idea of keeping track, but it's almost draconian somewhat, so I just was wondering, you know, to what degree we might want to consider this before it came up for council itself. And Mr. Pat wants to respond.
Thank you. I just want to respond to a few different things folks said. One is, just to clarify, Ms. Chenoweth, I didn't say a person whose name is on the mailbox is a tenant, and that's a-- the landlord-tenant relationship is about the exchange of housing for rent or something equivalent to rent. But what you were looking at, it wasn't in the program description, was on the affidavit where it has a statement, "I understand that the person who uses this address for any purpose shall be considered an occupant." And you're right, you brought up some very good examples of where a person legitimately, for example, have their name on the mailbox and not be an occupant. Of course, that is the very-- that gets the very heart of the problem of when people are overoccupying. One thing to be clear, maybe this wasn't clear when we talked about the zoning case either, Mr. Alex made a remark about multiple leases. There, it is very, very rare that there are multiple leases, except in real rooming houses. There are some houses that, you know, you might see signed rooms for rent, I think there are about 10 of them left, where an individual person rents a room and the rest of the people may very well be strangers. And then there are a few apartments that do that, too, up on North Linkin.
Melrose, right?
Melrose, University Commons and Atrium on North Linkin do that, too. In most cases with the houses and what we're doing with the over occupancy, it's one lease, and whatever number of people, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, whatever, together constitute, let's see, they're jointly and separately liable, all under one contract in that situation. Actually, I agree with a lot of what folks have said. You know, personally, I just-- my feeling that-- there's a part of me that just feels that it's really none of the government's business who lives inside a house, but we also have this public policy problem, which has always been the problem I've had with this whole occupancy thing. But we do have this public policy problem of losing owner-occupied, single-family homes to rental because of the profit motive that arises from the violation of our occupancy law, as well as the impact on neighborhoods of the population density in single-family homes being much greater than was intended when the houses were built in terms of, certainly in terms of parking, and I don't even know if it's how much sewer noise, you know, et cetera. The, as I said, I'm going to repeat myself, but the reason this was written so broadly was to not be unfair to anyone who's a property owner. As far as the motivation, if there were a way to have this apply only to single-family homes that are rented in their entirety, I mean, I don't think you could skip sabbatical houses, you know, frankly, and I don't know why you should, but there are rented, single-family homes are rented entirely to unrelated adults living together, you know, that would certainly accomplish what my constituents who have asked me to bring this forward want. I do not think there is anything wrong, though, with asking every person who's a landlord to register, that they exist in their renting property. One of the, when you talk about health or safety or anything, one of the problems with housing is that so much of it, and it's so unregulated, and it's a business. It's a business like any other business. It's not-- and I personally think there's a little bit of the difference when you're renting a room in your house, but if you buy a piece of real estate and rent it to other people to live in, you have to file the other laws. There are codes as far as the condition of the place. You can't just say, "Well, it's my house, so I don't have to keep it up to code." No, it's code, that's not just Urbana, that's all over the country, and it's been like that for years. And if you're using real estate, you know, if you're using real estate, providing housing for a profit, having the government know who you are and how to get in touch with you isn't a bad thing. And there are some properties we run into where you can check the tax record but can't even get a phone number for the person. You know, if there is a problem, how do you get in touch with the owner of records? So I don't think that would be a bad thing. But to try to carry off the mission, I was sent here to carry-- I'm going to get back to this affidavit thing, that companion to what we passed in terms of the zoning change, is this idea of the tenants knowing when they enter into the lease that it's against the law to have more than four people. Part of the idea of the way this works is that the tenants won't sign the lease in the first place with four names when they really have six people. If part of it is they have to sign this thing that says, "I attest there will but not be more than four people, and it's perjury to sign this if that's not true," that will scare a lot of people out of these bad situations. And it will, and this will be, this would be a, it would be the, probably the most effective way to keep the property owners who are trying to violate the law from duping the consumer into complicity with them and violating the law. Though it only works if they have to file it with the city. Someone's just, "Well, can't we just tell them to make a part of the landlord-tenant order and say they have to fill this thing out?" Oh, no, because, as Chris said, law-abiding people will, they'll all do it, but that's not who we're going after. We're trying to get the people who are trying to violate the law. I'm hoping, and it might be fantasy, that if this were, if something like this were enacted, that fewer property owners would even try to rent the place to more than foreign-related people. But in my heart, the main goal is for the tenants to be informed before they enter into the lease, because even with the change we made in the ordinance, we still have the situation where it's the tenants who are going to suffer a loss when they get caught, and there is not an effective way to ensure that they even knew they were doing anything wrong at the time that they entered into it. I'd like to stop that from happening. The best way to stop the occupancy is to stop it from happening. So I know, I could try making a motion if there's enough interest in moving forward with something, but actually, Mr. Alex wants to speak first, I'll yield to him.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the notion of whether or not it's appropriate to require landlords to register. And to clarify, my objection is not that I think there's a problem with requiring owners of rental property to register. The problem that I have is requiring that the residents of the rental property register. I mean, if I want to operate a business in the city of Urbana, the government can require me to have a license for that business and to make my presence known, but they can't require me to publish my customer list. And if I run a restaurant, the government can come in and say, "You have to, you know, meet the food safety standards and the health codes," but they can't come in and ask for a list of everybody who's eaten in my restaurant or who's bought a book in my bookstore, who's patronized my, you know, my movie theater. I think the notion that there's a compelling reason for the city to understand which properties are rental, I'd be willing to entertain, but I think that stops well before the city having a right to know who's paying the rent and living in every piece of rental property in the city, even every single-family home. So that's the thing that I have the objection to, and I'd want to know very, I'd want very strict controls on how this information was used and who this was disclosed to and so forth, because I think we really are opening a big privacy door here. And the other comment I was going to make is related to knocking out a lot of these situations, which we're not really trying to regulate. One way you could do it is by indicating that only property that was rented for a certain period, over a certain period of time, or that had not been owner-occupied for a certain period of time, would not apply. In other words, your sabbatical house, right, is rented for less than a year by the owner of the property. A piece of, your leaseback agreement is a situation where you've got somebody who was an owner-occupied property at some point within the last, you know, 12 months. There are ways that we could probably distinguish what constitutes a true income rental property and what constitutes a, what's really a single-family home, somebody renting to a room or renting to their roommates or a leaseback or sabbatical home or whatever else. I still don't feel comfortable enough with this as set forth to vote, to move it forward tonight, just because of all these open questions. But I think if we're going to look at doing something like this, these are all things that we might want to throw into the mix.
Ms. Chenoweth?
To answer your question, I'd be interested in sending it to our next committee meeting instead of to council, and, you know, see where we're at at that point, and, you know, provide any input before the committee meeting that I can before then. The, on the issue of privacy, we've talked, you've mentioned this before, and in kind of theory, things made a lot of sense, and it was only when I saw the affidavit that I think similarly to Mr. Alex. Is something that's at the city clerk's office accessible through Freedom of-- would this be accessible through Freedom of Information Act?
Possibly it could be. There is a specific exception to the Freedom of Information Act for documentation that would constitute an unwarranted invasion of privacy, which this very well could fit into.
The reason I ask is because I actually didn't think about this till Mr. Alex was speaking, but as someone who has worked with battered women in the city of Urbana and Champaign, and in particular, I'm thinking of, you know, people I've worked with who are on the run from husbands, in this case, who would be extremely uncomfortable with signing something like this, which would put in some area, a location of where they were. And so, you know, sure, they'll find, they might find a way around it, but if the landlord knows that they're, that they can't rent and they've already been slapped with a fine, you know, for good reason, for renting out without having the license, I just, I'm really concerned about, I'm not concerned about the privacy of landlords. And it's not, I am a landlord, you know, Mr. Albert's a landlord, we are, some of us at this table are landlords, and I actually have no problem with, even as a person who rents owner-occupied, being part of this. My concern is certainly not myself, but these kind of certain situations that I feel are sensitive. And so, the privacy issue, I think, is a big one. Also, just issues of who lives together, who, and when you say relationship, we did talk about domestic partners, or you say partner, or fiance, or things like that, and, you know, people may have entanglements with other relationships, and there's a document. And so, I just think that if this was something that only our staff looked at for the purposes of, you know, going and making sure that people are registered, that's one thing, especially if it's understood that that staff, those staff members cannot share that information with anyone else, it's confidential information. But if it's accessible through Freedom of Information Act, then we get into those situations. And I think in particular, people who are on the run from abuse or violence is one thing I'd be concerned about.
I might just comment, perhaps. Most, I mean, a landlord, when they enter in a lease agreement with a tenant, does require signatures, and so the back page doesn't offend me very much, because all we're doing is listing who is renting the apartment. But when you're requiring people to, by under oath or in an affidavit, state their personal relationship with other members in the household and details of a personal nature, which is, in some instances, really not the landlord's business, it does cause me to have some concern, too. And I'm wondering if there are other ways to achieve the purpose of informing tenants that it's illegal to have more than, you know, X number of individuals in a occupy dwelling, whether it's four or three or six or whatever we picked, by requiring some kind of, like, affirmed display of like a plaque or, you know, a certificate of, you know, something, and which, you know, I suppose then could be removed at the convenience of the landlord. But I mean, there must be other ways of achieving some of these steps. So while the idea, the intent, seems to be pretty strong, there are so many questions about it that it, I think it might be worth more deliberation within committee before it goes to council myself. Do you want to respond, however?
Yes. One thing, I guess to make this clear, had the committee been interested in this exactly as described, it wouldn't have gone to council next. The motion would have been to request that the staff draft an ordinance--
Yes.
The motion would have been to request that the staff draft an ordinance that incorporate all this. So nothing's going to council right away. If, and I'll just mention that personally, I'm actually one-sixth of a landlord of one rental unit, which I know isn't quite -- especially the rest of you, but so I know, so I have a little bit of the other side of that in my mind, but that's not my primary knowledge or interest. If there is, I'm going to make a motion.
That seems appropriate.
And if this is all right. And I move to place this subject on the agenda for the next committee meeting so that the city council can consider a proposal that incorporates the concerns that were expressed tonight.
Second.
Okay, that seems appropriate. So there's been a motion to place this on the next committee meeting, which would be on February 21st? Oh, that's today.
Twenty-eighth, yes.
Twenty-eighth.
Glad to speak.
Yes. And it's been seconded. Is there discussion?
Just two things. One, I want to thank you all for participating in this discussion. That's why I put this on the agenda, because, you know, and bless the hair of Glenn Birman sitting in the audience. Some of you know Glenn, he used to be the Assistant Director of Public Works and is my neighbor just down the street. And I think, I could be wrong, Glenn, but I think it was maybe three years ago, it's been a long time ago, since he started sending me this information about this city has these affidavits and that city has these affidavits. And we've had lots of discussion in neighborhood group about different things, including posting and would the landlord take the posting down, and the people in the neighborhood not wanting the posting outside. And Glenn keeps coming back with, "Why don't you really seriously look at what they're doing in Lafayette, what they're doing in lots of other places where they have this affidavit?" So I want to put that, bring that forward, and I appreciate you giving this feedback so we can try to come up with, I can try to come up with a proposal that maybe you all would like. I guess, you know, in the interest of -- let me actually say this. I'll just say that, and I appreciate your spending the time tonight discussing this and providing that feedback, and I will try to bring back something that maybe folks will support.
Anybody else?
Well, let me ask, you know, there have been a number of things discussed about, you know, the registration portion of it, owner-occupied, should they be included, not included? Is there anything that you'd like staff to take a look at while we're contemplating this? You know, we talked about the, you know, there have been a lot of comments talking about narrowing the focus of this instead of, you know, bringing in the entire landscape. Is it, would it be helpful to see if we think it's possible to target only single-family rentals on this? Or is it, if Jake's on that?
Specifically, the way, if you could go as far as what Chris described, single-family, single-family homes rented, a single-family home, yeah, single-family rentals and exempting things like owner-occupied homes or homes that are rented for a short period of time while the owner is away, like sabbatical homes, and that type of thing.
Or leased home or something like that.
Yeah. Let me be careful how I word it, but yeah, if you could ask the city attorney to look into that for us, that would really be very helpful, because that seems to be the general sentiment here.
So we have a motion to send it to the next committee meeting, and it's been seconded, and we've had some discussion, more discussion?
Just to answer the mayor's question, on the issue of the affidavit, I guess the question, if it hasn't been clear, I would want to know, is, is there a way to do the affidavit and it not be available through Freedom of Information Act? And then the affidavit would say on it, "This is where the information is going and it will go no other place," something like that. I'd have to think about, I think I want to think through all the scenarios that I possibly can to see if that would address it. I can't promise that will, but I think that will at least start to address some of the concerns I have.
Any further? Yes, Mr. Alex?
I guess I'll say, I'll support forwarding this to another committee meeting, just because I want to see where it goes. I have some pretty grave concerns about whether this is the right way to regulate what I see as a pretty, a very important problem to one particular neighborhood of the city, whether this is the way that we ought to regulate that on a citywide basis. So I guess, you know, don't count on me being incredibly supportive of this when it comes back, but I will support moving it forward to the next committee.
Okay, any further comment? Should we vote, then, to advance this to the next committee? All those in favor of doing so, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye also. And nay? Anybody who opposes, say nay. None? Okay, so it will be put onto the agenda of the next committee meeting?